It is 1:45 and this meeting of the Shelton Metropolitan Parks District is now called to order. The first item on the agenda is the consent agenda. And are you ready for a reading?
I am ready for a reading.
May we please have a reading?
The Shelton Metropolitan Parks District Consent Agenda, voucher numbered 14, in the amount of $100,917.80 for 2016 third quarter services.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
And I will second that motion.
Discussion? Okay. Did you have?
No.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. There's no old business. We do have some new business and, oh. Ryan!
Ryan said, "Vicky, will you take this over for a few minutes?" And I said, "Sure, what do you guys want to talk about?"
Well, it says new business.
It says?
Yes. They're going to be presenting. I just have to say that I think that maybe Cinnamon, this is her first time through the budget cycle for both the Metropolitan Parks District and also the city, the city's budget. So, I think she probably kind of missed that it started at 1:45.
Oh, 1:45.
And that they're bringing the budget presentation documents to the meeting. So, we do have a preliminary budget for the Metropolitan Parks District. So, I think Ryan was going up there to say, "Oh, it didn't start at 2:00 today, it started at 1:45."
Oh, dear.
Yeah.
I think I missed that once or twice, you know? It's just, it's odd to think, you know, that 15 minutes early, but it is what it is. Do you want to do a public comment or something?
Yeah, I think since we're, while we're waiting, if there is an opportunity for general public comment, if anyone would like to comment on anything regarding the Metropolitan Parks District, now would be the time.
I can't leave.
And seeing no commenters.
I could say, "I love parks," I mean.
I'll say something. Vicky, could you hand me a parks paper?
Parks paper?
The purple one, I think.
Oh, sure.
I did not grab one, thank you very much.
Okay.
I did want to get one.
We're trying to kill time.
So, we're just trying to kill time.
Not that we want to kill anything, but I will say, I'm sorry, but I will say that the summer, towards the end in August there, my, I was working with a plumber gentleman and a young man that works with me, and we did go to the park up there on the hill, Callahan. Is that Callahan? Yes. What a beautiful park, you know? And I know we had done a lot to fix it up and everything, but we sat there and had lunch and it was just a great experience. And so, anyway, we have some really nice parks and I just really want to shout out to Mark Ziegler and obviously Commissioner Tracy Moore, you know, for her involvement in that, the parks in Shelton. I think they're doing a great job and it's one of our real highlights.
Well, they do, you know, have, Mark is the director of that Metropolitan Parks District and he has Luke Manning that works for him as the crew lead. And really, it's kind of the two of them. And then they have a maintenance worker that kind of rotates all through public works that helps out some, you know? But they are the ones that keep that program going and Mark does a lot of it on his own with the recreation piece of it, you know? So, he does a pretty great job trying to keep our Parks and Recreation Program going and the parks all spruced up and everything. So, I think he does a fantastic job.
I would also like to mention, since we have one of the members here, that we have a very active and involved Parks Board. And I know Commissioner McDowell served on that board before she was elected and so I would like to give kudos to the Parks Board. And I won't call you on the carpet, but I would love to have an update sometime on what the Parks Board is doing.
They're busy.
Absolutely.
Well, the one thing is, I would say, all the parks that I've seen is the lack of litter. A lot of big cities especially, wherever, you know, they have their crews and stuff, but, you know, it really varies. I don't ever see big piles of garbage kind of put some places. I mean, just very, just a good job at that, you know? So, that's a real good thing.
Okay, we have just finished with general public comment. Even though we had nobody from the general public comment. Yeah, we all pitched in and helped with that.
Can I ask that you postpone the meeting until after our study session and then we come back to finish up?
Absolutely. So, we will temporarily adjourn this meeting and call it back to order after our regular session.
There you go. Welcome, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And the first item on our agenda is our weekly commission reports. And so, I'll look to my left and then I will know that Commissioner Moore can do hers first.
Okay. Sorry, I was just looking at that. And the only thing I have this week is on Wednesday, we will be planting the last few trees up on Brockdale. And it will happen at 10 o'clock in the morning, right?
Did you say Wednesday?
Yeah, Wednesday. And so, if you too would like to join us for a photo op, you're more than welcome.
And so, what time is that?
10 o'clock.
10 o'clock.
Up across from Spring, Springwood?
The new running.
Springfield Park. Yeah, sorry. Yeah, I was totally ready for this announcement, you can tell. But it's exciting. These are many of the trees that we have replanted are the Starlight Dogwood trees, which were recommended by Department of Natural Resources as street trees. And this fulfills part of our obligations for being a tree city. So, come and help us celebrate.
Okay.
And that's it for this week.
Okay. Commissioner McDowell?
Tuesday, I have my LEFT Board meeting at 8:00 a.m. And LEFT Board stands for Law Enforcement Officers and Firefighters. And we manage the pensions and their medical expenses for retired officers and firefighters. So, Wednesday, I'll be there at the tree planting. I wouldn't miss that for the world. And Wednesday, also in the evening, I have chambers after hours at 5:30. That's my week.
All right. And I have no real scheduled meetings this week, other than I have some meetings with individual citizens and we talk about life in general and how the city's doing. I'd look, I probably would try and make that one on Wednesday morning, thanks for the invite, for the tree planting up off of Brockdale Road there. And so, it's a pretty, sure, a pretty light week for me. And Commissioner Moore has something else to add.
Oh, okay. So, I also neglected to mention that I will be attending the county commission briefings tomorrow. And I have a meeting after that with Tim Sheldon discussing options for the railroad. So, I will be doing that. And then I will try to attend the Chamber of Commerce event, too.
Since you mentioned county commissioners, I'll be there Tuesday morning.
It's a good thing we do this.
Since you announced that, I've announced it. Yes, okay. I'm done.
All right. Is there any more commissioner weekly reports? Hearing none. There's opportunity for general public comment. And so, if anyone would like to come and speak, this is an opportunity. And so, we would welcome you to the podium, but you need to sign in first. So, Vicky, do we have anybody that signed in? Well, Vicky's not here.
Forrest Cooper.
Forrest Cooper signed? Please come forward.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Are you doing the timing there, Corey? Do you do, because this, he's usually right on the second, but make sure you push that button.
It's Halloween.
It's Halloween, that's right.
Give me four minutes.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. I'm Forrest Cooper, 409 West Railroad. I just wanted to let you guys know that tonight, between 4:00 and 7:00, there's an awesome trick-or-treating event going on downtown, the Shelton Downtown Merchants. In partnership with a parents group and also with the Journal, have put together a fun and safe trick-or-treating event. There's over 30 participating vendors that have agreed to stay open late and offer candy to the kids. And there's also a few that are doing a little bit more than that. The cinemas are playing a free movie starting at 4:00 with a canned food donation. I think they're playing Hocus Pocus. So, send, send the teens down there for that one, they'd like that. And then Cooper Studios is having a photo booth where all the proceeds are going to Graduation Matters. Come on down and check out the new automatic camera, it's pretty cool. And then also Coffin Birth Tattoo is doing the pumpkin carving contest. And their proceeds, I believe, are going to adopt a pet. So, come on down and support local business and have a fun time tonight. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. You just have to sign in. Have to, you have to come in, have to sign your name. We got the, got the rules. Sign in. Vicky, look.
If it wasn't me, I would have already told you.
No, no, no. Vicky, look, she's right there. She's going to get the name signed in.
What am I going to do?
We got the timer. Limit her to three minutes.
My time's already up.
I just wanted to talk real quick that our tenants from the Transit Community Center are going to be coming every meeting that you guys have coming up in the next couple months. As of February, we'll be full at the Transit Community Center. We have four different social services groups and we met one last week, Family Education and Sports Services. We also have Catholic Community Services and Community Youth Services and they, people from there will be coming. They wanted me to do it, but I think they can speak to their programs better than I can. So, and then in February, we'll have our newest tenants coming and speaking to you so you guys all know what's going on over there.
I have a question. I have a question, if it's okay. Have you, you've let us know that and if we give them more, you know, give them more time, if they're on the agenda, for example.
I asked them to get on the agenda, yeah.
Yeah, because that's the best way to do it, then we can schedule them, it gives them more time and, and more of a platform there, so.
Yes, I did ask them to do that, but I just wanted to let you know that they'll be coming.
Great, thank you very much.
Thanks, Kathy. Congratulations.
All right. Oh, there you go. All right, moving right along, we have a consent agenda. Are we ready for a reading of the consent agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, we are. Can we please have that?
Voucher numbered 12874 through 12949, in the amount of $344,799.38.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
I will make the motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
I second that motion.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The agenda passes. There is no old business today at this time, but we have an item under new business. And so, I would like to do is turn this meeting over to our city administrator, Ryan Wheaton.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Today, we're here to talk about next year's budget. So, 2017, some things are going to remain the same, some things are going to change quite a bit. Tonight, we're going to present to you the preliminary budget, which, of which we talked about, about four weeks ago and kind of laid out some of that information. Last week, we provided some more information to help illustrate how we ended up, where we are going to talk about tonight with the preliminary budget. And now, I will describe some of those things that we have looked at over the last couple of months as we put this preliminary budget together. One of the things that we have talked long and hard about the last three months amongst city staff is rebuilding trust throughout the community. And in doing so, making sure that we are providing appropriate services and putting ourselves in a position that in the near future, we can actually start talking about improved performance with some measurable metrics. Right now, as we've talked about last week, we're having difficulty making sure that we are on track with things that we thought were taken care of years ago. So, those are our main concerns, rebuilding trust, establishing those services, and then making sure that our performance is increasing. Across the city, we still see some of the same things that everyone has noticed the last few years. We lost another 200 jobs when Olympic Panel Products closed. Added to the 270 jobs that we lost when Simpson closed a year ago, those things add up to the point where when we get, we're hoping around 200 jobs next year, when Sierra Pacific Industries opens up, it will be nice for the local economy, but it will not replace what we've lost in the last year and a half. So, every little bit counts at this point, but we need to figure out a way to accelerate that growth and to do it in a way that is respectful of our history, but also gets us prepared for the things that we're looking for in terms of a local economy. We've talked at these meetings and around the city as well about the fact that throughout the county, we're still right around 8%. Over the summer, we were seeing about 8% unemployment. That's also something that we factored in when we look at next year's budget. So, in terms of revenues for next year, we are projecting growth at about 6% in terms of our tax revenue. We have tried to maintain a conservative growth estimate when we looked at this budget. The general fund, we're expecting it to grow 3%. So, we had, as you know, from the presentation that we did four weeks ago, we had a lot of requests come in from staff. And a lot of these requests were longstanding requests that had occurred year to year and hadn't been funded. Unfortunately, we were not able to fund most of those again this year. We did, however, place an emphasis on people, HR, human resources, over the things that we could have purchased. So, if it came down to us being able to purchase a new vehicle versus staffing a position half-time, we looked at the need in terms of what that person can do outside of that one individual role. And we think that we have come up with a preliminary budget that reflects that pretty accurately. Debt is obviously an area of concern for not just you and the staff here, but a lot of the folks in Shelton that I see and hear from. It is a topic that is likely not going to go away for a long time. We are projecting that our debt payments next year will be about $270,000 every month. And so, this is something that for us is a serious matter. We want to make it clear that there has never been discussion from my office or from anybody else's office since I've been with the city in terms of us not being able to meet those obligations. And that maintains in 2017. There is no concern over the fact that we cannot, well, let me rephrase that in a better way. We have every faith that we will make good on those payments and there is no concern that we can't do that. So, it's a large number. And in terms of instructing this budget, it will, it helps us frame our priorities, knowing that we have this large debt payment, or these large debt payments that add up every month. But there is no concern being able to pay that. So, in the preliminary budget, in the city manager letter, you'll see some more details laid out about what those look like annually. But I wanted to point out to you that it is a lot of money, but we are able to pay that, so there's no concern. In terms of the projects, last week, we discussed the projects that we have wrapping up and projects that we have on the horizon. Those are a concern for me. We have a couple projects in particular, the Angle Side Booster Pump Station, as well as the Upper Mountain View Pressure Zone, in particular, the tank that's up there, excuse me, that have turned into significant concerns in terms of how much money we've spent versus the benefit that we have received or we are going to receive. We continue to have meetings about those projects and at this point, we're moving along slowly with one. And with Angle Side Booster Pump Station, we are, at this point, not making much headway in terms of getting the benefit that the citizens of Shelton were promised for that project. With that in mind, last week, Acting Public Works Director Craig Gregory indicated that we have similar concerns about projects around the horizon. And I say on the horizon because we haven't started much work on those, but these projects respectively are 3, 9, and 17 years old. So, these are not new projects to the community, it's just that the benefits that they are expecting to see, they haven't seen. And we're going to talk about those throughout the budget tonight. So, Craig is here. We want to give just a brief update. If you have any questions about those three projects, because for us, those projects are going to steer where we go next year to a large extent. The first one is the SR3 or the Per orchard parking ride. That project, to date, we've spent a little over $400,000 of the funds that were initially available in 1999. To the point we've reached now, we feel that we need to move forward with that project. That project would be difficult for us to fund just to walk away from at this point. We've also begun discussions with MTA, Mason Transit Authority, to figure out if their, if their current situation will allow them to participate in a manner that helps us accelerate that project. And we hope that we'll be able to figure out a partnership there that is going to make that project a success. The second one is Downtown Creeks. That project, we have spent roughly $63,000 of planning money. We estimate that it would take us around $200,000 more to get that project done. And in this budget, one of the questions that we will have to answer is whether or not we look to pay back the planning money at $63,000 or if we see enough benefit right now that we come up with $200,000. I can tell you that that will not be an easy thing to do. And the final project that we need to make a decision on quickly is, I guess it's easier and it's tougher at the same time. It's a great project, it's Evergreen Safe Routes. The easier part is that we haven't spent any of the planning money. So, that's not, if we walked away from that project and allowed the funding agency to give the money somewhere else, we wouldn't owe them money. But it's tough because that is a great project that we have talked about for the last three years as being 100% grant funded. We have a grant for just over $497,000. That project, we're estimating right now, is about a $900,000 project. So, the question we will need to answer and certainly our recommendation is that we, we look to potentially doing that work in the future. But at this point, it, we would have a very hard time coming up with $400,000 to get that project done. If we delayed it more, one, the money is not actually there right now, we'd have to request the money back and explain what we're going to do with it. But the other thing, the other problem that we have is that, that is certainly a project where it's not going to get cheaper if we wait another two or three years. And judging by the fact that we're, I just talked about a nine-year-old project and a 17-year-old project, the likelihood that we would get that done a year from now versus now, isn't very good. Do you have questions about those three projects?
I have a question about the Evergreen Safe Routes. Is, is there a penalty if we give the money back? Would we be able to reapply with good standing if we waited a couple of years for that?
I think that, I'll let Craig answer this in a second to give you more specific info. From my perspective and the conversation I had with local programs, good standing, yes, with the caveat that we already have a bit of reputation at the state level for how we treat grant money. So, we don't have the best reputation now. And when we've discussed this, same as when we talked to you, I would rather be honest with these funding agencies. They can use the money other places. We're holding on to money that is tied up that they can't give out to other folks. So, I don't think they're going to tell us, "You're just as good in two years as you would be now if you applied." But at the same time, I don't know how, how well they look at us at this point. Do you have a sense for an answer on that question? We did meet with local programs again. And their suggestion was to give back the money as soon as possible, if that was the direction that we were going to go. And their suggestion back to us was, "You would still be in good standing, but try to move forward with some smaller projects that you can get done on time and within budget to improve your status." So, that's kind of where we're at with as far as giving the money back and staying in good standing.
Okay, thank you.
Well, basically, I feel I need to speak to this issue a little bit. And that's to say that this is an unfortunate situation that Shelton has found itself in. And my feelings are, there is no one person that's to take the blame for our financial condition, that we have made decisions and we have kind of hoped that things would all work out. But because reality is that we haven't had the money come in that we had hoped for, we are in a situation where this next phase of Shelton's history, it will not be pleasant or easy. We're all going to have to make compromises. But I really have faith and confidence in the citizens of Shelton and in this group that's sitting here to, to just, what we need to do is we need to be very truthful and honest and realistic about what we're doing in the future. And that what we have to do is, is set priorities, okay? And again, it's not going to be pleasant, it's not going to be easy, but we have no place to go but up. We have a great team in the city of Shelton with the citizens and with the people here working together and in that, but we got to stop, we, well, we are stopped from trying to borrow more money for future infrastructure projects that aren't needed for today. And so, all I know is, we're going to make it, it's going to be something we're going to have to work together and I hope that we all can. I feel very good about our future, but it's going to take a little time to kind of figure out, okay, what are our priorities and what can we really afford? So, that's the best that I can do to explain my position on kind of where we find ourselves today. Thank you, Ryan Wheaton, for coming in and trying to set things straight and being truthful and having a realistic approach to this, you know? And so, that's all I have to say at this time. Do you have anything to add to this conversation?
Any more questions about those projects?
We will have to make decisions, right?
Yeah, I think that, that was my question because I, even though I know that this will come up later, I think that I would agree with the idea that we really scale back as to what is really doable, what we can really afford, and what makes the biggest difference. And maybe cut back on the projects until we are more on top of things.
And I'll, I'll give Cinnamon Brown, our Finance Director, just a 30-second heads-up that she's going to, she's going to start her presentation. But the last thing I'll leave you with is, I appreciate the fact that you have faith in our work. And I can say that the folks that are working for the city of Shelton, there is really no harder working group than you would define.
No, absolutely. We can applaud for that, okay?
We have.
Just this one time.
We talked about, we talked last week about a couple projects that our, our in-house team completed. They're smaller scale projects, they got done on time, under budget. But that's the type of things that people expect us to do. And looking forward, when Craig and I have sat down with some of his team and talked about the projects that we can get done next year, that is the way we want to do projects. We expect that all the staff for the city of Shelton will be good stewards of public funds. And that includes grant funds, it includes loan money, it includes the tax revenue that we get, that when we say we're going to do things, that we actually get them done. We don't shelve them for a few years or a few decades, we actually get out and get those things done. So, tonight, we're going to start talking about what's reality in terms of what we can do next year. And we will answer questions as soon as Cinnamon gets done here.
I have one question.
Yeah.
I know the SR3, we're going to go ahead, that's really important because that's been sitting for many years.
Yes.
But on the Downtown Creeks and the Evergreen Safe Routes, on a scale of 1 to 10, what are the importance of getting those done? Zero being?
It's, I'm going to leave the rating up to you three. I will say that for those projects, if you tell us to do something, everything's a 10 for me. So, when you tell us to get things done, we will get them done, we will get them completed within the timelines that we set. If we can't, I will tell you beforehand. I can tell you that if we're looking at the last two, Evergreen Safe Routes and Downtown Creeks, for me, those are, they're smaller projects, obviously. The benefit is different than the benefit for the SR3 project. That project, the downside to not doing that project is an enormous amount of money that we'd have to repay.
Right.
And really, the discussion of me talking about the priority for those three projects, they're all good projects.
Right.
It's more of a priority based on how much money we've spent. Two of them, we haven't spent much. We've spent $63,000 and then nothing on the other one. SR3 parking ride, we have spent a lot of money at this point.
Yeah.
I will say that I am for completing that project. And that will be one of the things where I believe it's something that Commissioner Moore and I have been talking about for 25 years. I mean, we were on a little committee way back and that, you know, that per orchard and getting that taken care of. So, sometimes these things take long, but usually they don't take that long. So, I think we got to pull that one off, okay? So, that would be a priority. If the others can, they can be done, anything can be done, but it's got to be in a lot more organized fashion that we prioritize these things. Because unfortunately, we just, we got a lot of things that happened that were out of our control. These mill closings and the financial hit was big. And so, it's going to take a little while to readjust, but once we adjust, we will get right back on track and a lot of these projects can be done.
With that, we will turn the presentation over to Finance Director Cinnamon Brown.
All right, supposedly, we are on a PowerPoint here. Haven't used it before. See if we can get it to work. Okay.
I don't know if we dim the lights a little bit, but I don't know if that's possible.
You can, you can dim these in this room.
I mean, I just thought that maybe for all of that would be-
Kathy knows.
I know, I know.
Okay.
For 15 years.
Okay.
Is that good, or there?
That's perfect, for me.
So, your preliminary budget is similar in some sense to the pre-preliminary that we did beginning of October. And the difference here is that we've had a chance since then to look at the fund balances, how the revenues and the expenses are affecting each fund, requests like Ryan mentioned, increases to funding, things like that. It kind of gives you a better overall picture of what the city is looking at for the future. So, there's a very brief overview of the difference between your pre-preliminary and your preliminary. So, the whole city budget, the total request, including the general fund and all the funds, was $48,662.95. And you can see from the chart, and make it a little bit bigger, you'll be able to see it better, there is a small upward trend in your overall expenses from '14 to now. We included '14, '15, and '16, both budgeted and projected, in your trend data for here. The difference, and I'll mention this right now, the difference between your '16 budget and your '16 projected, when you're looking at these tables, is the '16 budget is what was adopted at the end of 2015, and the '16 projected was figured out closer to on June 30th of this year. So, it has more accurate data, in my opinion, but we give them both to you. All city revenues and expenditures, again, you can see that $48 million at the bottom. Your revenues and your expenditures will equal because it has to be a balanced budget. That doesn't necessarily mean that you're getting the exact same amount of revenue and expenditure in and out. That fund balance, that little savings account on either end, is what's making up the difference, the little buffer. And you can see the general fund, I believe, comes in second. I think it went sewer, sewer, general fund, water. I wrote it down somewhere. But revenues and expenditures comparisons by fund, and when you guys get your document, you'll have all these in there, too. They'll be a lot bigger, you can see them. This one just shows you over the past few years, the different funds that are making up those totals. Employee costs, your personnel costs for '17 are looking at almost 8.5 million, 8.369. A $300,000 increase because of a multitude of factors, some being the new requests, others just being necessary increases.
We can take a second here and talk about what these positions are. So, we had a situation where some grant funding for our planning department was being removed, so we acted to make sure that all three of those staff members remained whole in their positions. Additionally, you'll see that we are looking to add a custodial worker in facilities, and then, I think, up there, we are also, the second one that's listed up there, is to make our community service supervisor program a full-time position. For us, that was a priority. When we have that person out there for a day, we don't get one day's worth of work. We get, it's a multiplier effect because that person is supervising four or five other people who would not otherwise be out in the community. Additionally, we're looking at an economic development analyst position. One of the things that we noted in the preliminary budget this year, for all intents and purposes, we do not have a plan for economic development in the city of Shelton, and I don't know that historically we have had one outside of the mill. So, when the mill did well, the town did well, and we recognize at this point that we need to start planning for what the future economy in Shelton is going to look like, and we need to actually take a look at filling a position that can do that work for us.
There's your detail on the employee costs, and I think I just lost mine. Again, another graph. There's a lot of data in your budget document, there's a lot of writing, but we also try to make sure there's a lot of visuals, because I know not everybody wants to sit there and go read through an entire, you know, 25-page book. The pictures will make it a lot easier to understand some of the data. The graphs like these, there's some for each fund, there's also some of these for different purposes. They all include the description of the category, so in this example, salary costs, et cetera. They also include the percentage of the total, so we thought that would be helpful. Your general fund, and you have one of these for each of the funds, your requested expenditures, Your revenue is coming in about $11,010,000, with a shortfall of about $569,495. A majority of that shortfall is made up from the new requests. Others are just general increases to operations, salary benefits, other things that increase every year. General fund purposes, this is the, not so much the departments, but the activities that are happening in the general fund. You've got your public safety, I'm trying to pull mine up, see if I can get it up here, public safety, regulatory, cultural, and in the budget, we have a write-up about each of these categories and kind of what the community gets in return from these, so. Your general fund revenues, I'm really going to have to pull this up. One of these is the tax revenue, I think it's the bottom one, and the top one is the revenue by source. So, the revenue by source, you're able to see your full revenues, how much of that is your beginning fund balance, so that's not really money coming in, it's just kind of the buffer sitting there. And then, how much of it is taxes, licensing impairments, intergovernmental revenues, charges for services, fines and forfeits, and miscellaneous. The large one, and this is the bottom, the tax revenue, is your, I'm sorry, the revenue by source, the big group, is your tax revenue, which then you can see in the chart right below. It also gives you details about what, which taxes are making that up, including property and sales tax. And I guess this is probably a good time to mention that between your preliminary and your final budget, those two hearings, you will notice a difference in the tax amounts that are budgeted, because we don't have Mason County's levy information yet, they just gave us estimates. So, you'll see a slight change between now and then. General fund revenue, this is just a table to back up the charts. Sometimes people like to see the numbers. No, I do. This is your new requests, I believe, is very small. So, when we're talking about the new requests making up the shortfall or things like that, these are both the unfunded and the funded requests. We included everything on here, whether or not it went through the budget committee and got approved. This one, man, I thought I was even saying the right thing. Budget, yeah, it is. So, these, this first one is included in the budget, you've got your ongoing expenses at the top, and then your one-time at the bottom. The ongoing, usually your operational costs, the one-time, hey, I need this project, I need to buy something special, we need an employee wellness room, that's in there. And it looks like the slide didn't include the non-funded, but your budget document does have a table with the non-funded requests as well by department. Your tourism fund, $55,810, and revenues at $50,540. Shortfall, $5,270.
Can I ask a quick question on that one? Vicky, that tourism fund, I don't understand that.
That's just, that's not taking into consideration the ending fund balance, which we have $107,000 out.
Right, okay, yeah.
That $5,000 would kind of eat into that, to the ending fund balance.
That's right, thank you.
And I think if we, I'll check back here to see if we included the ending fund in any of these. Yeah, there we go. 537? Oh, I'll have to go back and check that. But yes, we don't include the ending fund or the beginning fund balances in these, because it's not really money coming in or going out.
What that really just says is that we chose to spend an extra $5 point whatever, or $5,000 more, and I know why we did that, and now I understand how that works, so.
Capital improvement, your requested expenditures, $1.7 million, projected revenues, $1,708,707. Shortfall, pretty small actually, of $19,627. It does include a transfer of just over $48,000 to the bond fund for that debt payment. And you'll see these for each of the funds that did have requests. The capital improvement fund requests and ongoing projects. Street overlays, mainly, I believe, funded by the TBD, the Transportation Benefit District. Water fund, expenditures at $10,348,516, revenues at $10,163.58, shortfall of $185,458. And, I can see mine here. Let's see what the big purple section is. Capital is the majority of what's making up the expenditures in the water fund. Ongoing projects and new requests, diving and inspection, water tank, repair and maintenance, construction, kind of the same general categories we tend to see.
Can you go back to that one second? Craig, do you want to touch on the Hall Equities Interchange project really quick?
We met with local programs along with Steve Goins, who is heading up that project. It looks like it is moving forward, looks like they're very close to moving in forward. And the numbers that you see up there are developer-driven, so I'm not sure if it shows as revenue later on, but it is tying the interchange to the other side, to the west side, but it is funded by the developer.
Thanks.
We had the Hall Equities, we have funded by a Traffic Improvement Board grant in Hall Equities, is what it says in here.
Then we will know by Thanksgiving whether that has been approved or not.
Sewer fund, expenditures of $13 million and revenues just under $13 million, shortfall of $300,848. Majority of theirs is, again, made up of capital, most of these are going to be. Solid waste, $1,905,226, projected revenues at $1,679,000. Surp, I don't know why it says surplus, it shouldn't say surplus. It's actually a shortfall of $226,266.
This is one that we are going to bring forward some information on next month, so we're going to have to have some fairly significant conversations around what this looks like. So, Craig's team is aware that we have some work to do around this topic, and I would expect that in the next few weeks, we will have a large portion of a meeting devoted to the future of the Solid Waste Fund.
Storm drainage, $704,215, revenues of $758,915, with an actual surplus of $54,737. And there's, I don't, it's kind of hard to read from up there, but that big teal section is actually their ending fund balance. This is the majority of what's making up that, their overall expenditures, which I know we don't show in the number there, but you have the data. Equipment, maintenance, and rental fund, your requested expenditures of $863,437, revenues of $785,285, and a surplus or shortfall of $78,152. And there's been a lot of discussion about this fund lately, so we might see some changes here in the next year or so. Fireman's pension, requested expenditures, $112,249, revenues, $152,773, surplus of just over $40,000. Majority of theirs is made up of ending fund balance as well. Is that it? Well, we also have the Library Endowment Trust and the Bond Fund in there. I don't even think, the Library Endowment had a, revenues of $900 coming in for investment interest, no expenditures, and apparently it don't have the bond written on here, but...
May I ask a question about that? I don't really know what the Library Endowment Fund is. Is it for capital improvements? Is it for maintenance? Is it just to do with the library?
So, your municipal code says the Library Endowment Trust Fund, because I had to go figure it out, accounts for a non expendable investment held by the city, the interest income from this is available for library operations. Yeah, and then I just go on to say it didn't actually have any expenditures.
In researching that in the past, there's certain expenditures that-
And what it was left for was to make sure that we could buy, you know, books for the library and those sorts of things. That was the original intent, but of course, it's changed a lot through the years since the library is now no longer owned by the city, but is contracted with, or annexed actually into Timberland, and so, there are certain things that they can apply to use the money for, to the city, certain different things, yeah.
Okay.
And how much is that fund?
Interesting.
The actual fund, the money that, because you said interest, you said $900, what, $900 interest or something? That, that's a huge amount of interest. I mean, that, if that's not per year, that they're making interest on that money, not that much. I mean, that's hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Yeah, it's a lot of money.
You see the interest? If that's true, did you say $900,000?
$900, $900.
$900 came in in interest. Well, if that's true, then just my basic, I mean, I make, you know, $30 bucks interest on my savings, which is, you know, some savings, you know, not a lot, but I'm thinking, this must be $500,000 or something, unless that is some, that interest is of some other combination, because at one-half of 1%, it takes a lot of money to get $900 bucks.
You're going to have this preliminary budget right after this meeting, and it'll also be on our website, so that number will be in there.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I wish I could make $900. I'm going, hey, how'd they do it?
$900.
Yeah, $900. Well, even $900.
I know.
It's a lot of money.
It is.
Okay.
I think that's the last one, yeah.
I will buy more specific information. Turn it on, Tracy.
Yeah, I would be really interested in that.
Did you have any questions about this so far?
Looks good.
Your document will include all these numbers, these charts, and then it'll have other things like city demographic data about the commissioners, things like that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
We have no reports today.
Okay, any final touches?
Just one clarification. We mentioned before, we were going to do rail options today. We put those back to next week so that we didn't overlap with the budget. So, next week, we're going to bring forward some different options and look for some direction on what to do with the offer of both the roundhouse and the rail.
Okay, and so, at this point, what I will remind, before I adjourn this meeting, is that we are going to go back to our Metropolitan Park Board meeting for a little bit here as, after completing this meeting, so if anyone would like to stick around for that, we're going to continue the meeting we started before this. At this time, I will announce that our next meeting will be Monday, November 7th, at 6:00 PM in the evening. This meeting is adjourned.
Okay, and at this time, we will go back to new business under the Shelton Metropolitan Park District meeting. So, this meeting is called back to order. So this meeting is called back to order.
Okay. Can we turn it off again?
Huh?
Can we turn it off again?
Are you gonna do another thing? That's all I-
It's, it's like three slides.
I can't read it anyway, the print is too small.
Did they, okay, you guys got copies of this one?
Yes.
Great. I just got a copy, too.
Okay.
Shelton Metropolitan Park District budget, two thousand and seven overview, this'll follow the same timeline that the city budget does, so you'll see a final one or so. Requested expenditures, three hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars, revenues of four hundred and forty-six thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars, surplus of sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars. And then your, the handout that you have in front of you will show you the breakout between the sixteen and seventeen, as well as the actual revenue and expenditures coming in and going out, and the ending and beginning fund balances. This one also will likely change, because it also relies on the levy information that we got from the county. So when we get their certified data, the numbers will change just slightly. Budget calendar, your next hearing will be on November seventh for the preliminary and also your revenue sources hearing. And then fifth, there's the final budget public hearing. And that is the Park District. Any questions?
No. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Nobody else have questions?
No.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, did you have anything to add to that, or no? Okay, so our next meeting will be November seventh, and is that a five forty-five meeting, or is that at six o'clock?
I think that's a special meeting, so we can set it whenever you'd like. It isn't a, a meeting that's pre-scheduled, like the quarterly meeting.
Okay.
If you'd like to start it at six o'clock, and we can immediately follow with our Shelton Commission meeting, that would work.
I would recommend that, just, it, it voids the fact that people want to hear about it, them showing fifteen minutes early. Whenever we can do that, I think that's a much better way to go.
Okay, so six o'clock?
We'll put that there.
Okay, so our next meeting of the Shelton Metropolitan Parks District will be November seventh at six PM, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.